Thank you. And we're going to, we have three delegations this morning and we're going to start with delegation number two, which is Destination of Soyou's 2019 Plan and Budget. And we will invite Ms. Glaser, the Executive Director, to come up. And we welcome Joanne Muirhead as well, who's the Chair of the Board. So please go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I'm sure you all can hear me. I don't probably need this mic, but...
You do, so it's on Granicus.
All right then. So, thank you very much for having us. As Mayor Sue mentioned, Joanne Muirhead is here as Destination of Soyou's Board Chair. So I'm going to present a quick overview of 2018 for those of you that may not be as familiar with what we've been doing, and then go right into our 2019 Plan and Budget. So one of the first things I wanted to bring to your attention is that Destination of Soyou's Board had a Board Retreat earlier this month, or in earlier October. And we wanted to just always take a look at where we are and where we're going. And we felt that it was important to fine tune our vision and mission statement. And I don't want to read through it, but all I'll say is that what we, we pulled it a little bit tighter to ensure that we're very clear and on track as to what we're here to do, which is to be a marketing organization. Increase visitation and encourage guests to stay longer. Next slide, please. So what we do is we market and promote Destination of Soyou's through targeted digital radio, print advertisement, promotion, social media, and we also have the Visitor Center. We do a lot of familiarization tours, encouraging free media exposure, and we also support our stakeholders with marketing opportunities. Some of the marketing and promotion that we have been involved in this year involves Destination B.C. and Thompson Okanagan Tourism Association. We've also worked with some of the festivals and events here in our community. And we have our annual Soyou's Visitors Guide, and we've created a number of activity and event packages. So some of the highlights that we'd like to bring to your attention for 2018 were, of course, the moving of our offices and our operation into the Visitor Center building. That was last year about this time, actually. It was quite a significant shift in Destination of Soyou's and our ability to have exposure to our community and to our visitors. So what, what that's done is we've increased our retail space, which has allowed us to actually create a revenue stream that we didn't really have before, increase visibility for our stakeholders, and increase racking opportunities. Year over year, the difference in who we get to touch is significant. We assisted 27,000 people in 2018, or 20, yes, 2018, and 4,500 people the year before in our local small visitor center. So as you can see, it's a significant shift in what we do, and there's some obviously costs related to that, but we're getting our job done in a much more significant way. We responded to the flooding concerns in the spring. We spent an extra $10,000 that we didn't actually plan on. I don't, I may have to change this, but I don't typically write in fires and floods into the budget, but that's probably going to shift. So we put a $10,000 digital and print campaign right into the Vancouver market right away. And by all accounts, doing the call arounds and talking to our different stakeholders, it did actually help keep things flowing. What we did was remind people that there's so many more things to do here and the reasons to be here other than being on the lake. I only had a handful of calls regarding the marinas and when they might be opening. And it actually coincided with a lot of the time that people were coming anyway. It was just frustrating for some people because they didn't know until the day. So I believe we opened June 3rd, a Sunday. We distributed press releases and real-time updates also into the entire market, not just the Vancouver market, through our social media channels and our media channels. We also participated in a regional strategic planning session with TOTA and the rest, and TOTA is Thompson Okanagan Tourism Association, and the rest of the communities within the South Okanagan that were impacted by the flooding. And we put together joint messaging and some marketing, mostly digital, as digital is very quick and easy and inexpensive to implement. We created a new logo. I found that we needed to have a defined presence, and the Soyou's brand logo has really got a lot of equity, and we had been using it for quite some time. So in conversation with Barry and a few other people, we decided to find a way to ensure that we could continue with the brand equity, but also define that we were doing things as Destination of Soyou's. So I think we did a pretty good job. Now, this doesn't really show the bright colors properly, but trust me, we've used all of the brand specs that we already had. We did need to find a new agency, as the agency that originally designed this logo is long gone. After doing a little bit of detective work, I discovered that we needed to do that. The snowbird activity for this year, as you can see by this chart, what we've done is a very difficult statistic to nail down, because there's an ebb and a flow. We're not using all of our rooms that are in inventory for snowbird business. Some of our properties are closed, some of our properties only use a certain percentage of their rooms. And so what we were able to do is, is give you a description or a visual on just how the snowbird traffic works and worked this year. Unfortunately, our snowbird traffic hasn't been tracked in any meaningful way prior to this, so I don't have anything to compare, and I'm getting asked for that quite a lot. All I can tell you is, is that when I speak with our stakeholders, there does seem to be a bit of a slump. And, and that is contributed to by the fact that we did have a couple of tough winters in a row, two, that I know about. And, you know, as in most accommodation sectors, there's, there's this envelope that the hotels push to see how far they can go. And I think they've all understood that they've gone as far as they can. Some properties will, will maintain those rates for various reasons, yield management strategies, and some will take some adjustments or adjust in their policies, their booking policies. I think it's great news because the snowbird market has, has really been solid and stable in our three, two and three tier properties. So it's given our smaller properties something quite stable and long-term that they can take to the bank year after year. It's our bigger properties that have more fluctuation with snowbird traffic, but they have many other avenues to rely upon. So I think this is, continues to be a very good and important market for us to continue, to maintain. We're working quite closely with Baldy Mountain Resort. This will be our second season with them. We've had successful partnerships with them. We put together a ski and stay package, and to our surprise, we sold 80 of them in our first year. And so we're working on that again. Baldy, of course, is, is outside of the geographical range of Destination of Soyou's. However, we, we know how important it is to work with all of the assets we have near and by. And so we're moving into a guidance role with Baldy and encouraging them to manage their own marketing, but dovetail into the, some of the things that we do so that, you know, they're less dependent upon us, but at the same time, we're, we're keeping them up, coming along with us and ensuring that we're getting the exposure and developing more winter product. We also had our seventh annual Oyster Festival, and we are actually in negotiations right now to have a partner take over Oyster Festival. In keeping with Destination of Soyou's focus on marketing, we are moving away from producing events or producing product. And Oyster Festival is successful. However, it does take a lot of resources away from Destination of Soyou's main focus, which is to market and promote Soyou's. We have a few partners that have always worked with us on Oyster Fest, and they're quite happy and excited to take over, and we're going to do everything we can to support them and make sure that it's a success. We were fairly selective in how we put this out there, and we're not quite ready to make a press release on this in terms of who the partners are, but it will be coming soon. We also introduced golf packages in a booking engine on the B.C. Golf Guide. So we have partnered with them, and our product, all of our product in Soyou's will be connected through the B.C. Golf Guide online booking service. And so that's been good. Again, that's something new, so we don't have anything we can track to tell you how that performed year over year, but we definitely have those measurements in place. Just recently, we hosted the Thompson Okanagan Tourism Association Annual General Meeting here in Soyou's, to our surprise, and last minute having to shovel around. I was told to expect about 85 to 100 people. Destination of Soyou's hosted the welcome reception, and we chose to do that up at Baldy Mountain. And we had 170 people. So we were scrambling for buses and, and looking for more ways to look after people, but it was a highly successful event. And, you know, a lot of the anecdotes I got from speaking with people were that they weren't going to miss coming to Soyou's. So we're a very desired destination, even within our own backyard. Some of the partner projects that we put together for 2018 include the Okanagan Hockey School Discount Book. We had a number of our partners that took part in that. We also partnered in the B.C. Arts Guide. And what we did there was we purchased space and then resold it to some of our interested parties, but we sold it at a supported rate because the Arts Council or the arts community isn't necessarily got large budgets. So we knew we needed to support that financially, so we did. We also worked in the same fashion with the B.C. and Alberta RV dealers, and they have a Visitor Guide that they put in their, their RVs. And so we worked on that and supported some advertising in there. We also did a lot of contesting and prizing with our digital present, our digital advertising, driving traffic for specific events in Soyou's over the year. We worked with Tin Horn Creek, Walnut Beach, Fairview Golf Course, Desert Model Railroad, some of the wineries, the Soyou's Golf Club, Medieval Fair. And so we did this through both Castanet and Icicle Broadcasting. So we're dipping our toes into the U.S. market to see if we can stir that up a little bit. Prior to my arrival, Destination B.C. pulled out of the U.S. market, so there was really no point in us going into that market on our own. So we waited for them to go back in, and they are, and we are in now too. We've created a really lucrative relationship with Icicle Broadcasting, and we're looking forward to doing a lot more with them. We also partnered, Destination B.C. has funds, grant funds available, and they're, they're focused on pulling communities of three or more together. And so we worked on two of those projects. The first one being the OIB Tourism Oliver and Destination of Soyou's. We came together with some other partners that were not community partners. And it's a matched program, and so in total, that program was $193,000. It was managed by somebody that was contracted through the OIB, and was heavily weighted on digital, social, and public relations, and we got some significant traction out of that and continue to do so. They launched that for the spring. That was supposed to promote a spring product. Unfortunately, we had a different idea about when to pull the trigger. And so when I was dumping more money into the Vancouver market, they were pulling out. So I wasn't real happy about that. That was their decision. They felt that it would be insensitive to be marketing when we are in a state of emergency. So that's a bit of an attitude that I think we really have to work against when we come together with the media, when we have these kinds of things. It's important, unless we really are on fire or underwater, we really need to make sure that we, we minimize, but not underestimate the actual event that's happening. The other project we worked on was with Tourism Kelowna, Vernon, and Pencticton, and that, again, was a digital and social media project where we were able to gain some assets, being photography. So our objectives, sorry, we're going into the 2019 Plan. So moved off of what we did in 2018, I'm talking about what we're going to do for 2019. So our primary objectives are back to our mission vision, to create a desirable year-round destination. We're focusing on shoulder season visitation, and we're looking at more cost-effective ways to do our marketing. We're marketing festivals and events, again, marketing them, not producing them. How we're going to measure our success is increased occupancy, room revenues, visits to the Visitor Center, our website traffic, social media interaction, stakeholder satisfaction, increased shoulder business, number of year-round accommodation packages developed, increased percentage in accommodation and package sales, and increase in U.S.-Canada border crossings. Primary markets that we will be targeting will be the regional area, the Okanagan and Similkamene Valley. It's our best opportunity, certainly in the leisure market in the wintertime or the shoulder period time. We're able to attract quite far up the valley. And we'll be looking at weekends, packaged getaways, festivals, camping, weddings, meetings, the whole gamut. We'll also be looking in, we'll continue with the Vancouver, Lower Mainland, and Fraser Valley, and other B.C. and Alberta areas, primarily Calgary and Edmonton. So nothing's really changing in terms of our targets, but we do have some secondary target markets. And those would be the Prairie Provinces specifically for our snowbird market and our travel trade, Washington State for packaged getaways, and our international long haul. We'll be looking at, in the camping and RV section and the festivals. And again, this is an area we're getting a little bit more engaged in. You know, the bandwagon that everybody jumped on when we got to ADS, approved Destination Status with China, was a bit the horse before the cart. However, as you all know, we have a number of investments by the Chinese into some of our wineries, ski hill, a few other things. And so they're coming, and so we might as well embrace that, but carefully. It is a very expensive market if you're not wise about how you handle it. The other part of that recipe is, is that the tour market is very summer-focused, and that isn't a need period for us. So we need to find the international visitor that is interested in our shoulder periods. And we know that Asia, not just China, but the Asian markets do have the propensity to do that. And a couple of our properties, mainly The Coast and The Holiday Inn, are very invested in those two markets in the shoulder period and have done quite well. So we're going to see how we can further embellish that. Our leisure market initiatives are, you know, leisure market is, is our biggest market, and it's kind of the most ambiguous market. It just covers so many different things. So we're going to focus on Google Display Ads, retargeting visitors on specific leisure-related websites and pages. We're looking deeper into the hiking and cycling aspect of visitation. We're going to spend some money on pay-per-click advertising. We're going to continue with Castanet and Icicle Broadcasting. We will continue to do some print, but print is, as per the norm, going to be less and less over time, as it has less amount of effect. Paid social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We created a Facebook page just for our snowbirds, our seniors, and that's been doing really well. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to get into doing some more work with global TV, getting that bit of exposure that all of our province seems to be on, and everybody's going, "Where are we?" So we're going to be there. Camping and RV, continue with print, continue with the RV Canada Guide, the B.C. and Alberta Campground Guide, Backroads Mapbook, and Go Camping B.C. Those are all print, and then they're supported with digital. We'll be doing some targeted paid social media advertising, and again, that will be Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. For golf, similar, again, these are, these are considered part of the leisure market. However, they're more targeted, and it's very similar initiatives. Snowbirds, we'll continue on maintaining our base with the snowbirds. And this is a market that requires more print than digital, but certainly responds to digital, especially Facebook. And our ski and winter program, this year, we have developed a bit of a brochure. In the past, we had a snowbirds Visitor Guide when I arrived, a very expensive piece and not a lot of meat and potatoes in it. So we took that away and sort of sat on it and thought about how we should pull it together. We now have a young lady working with us that's extremely talented and has a lot of background in blog writing and development of this type of product. So I tasked her with putting together a brochure that is specific to snowbirds' interests and activities, and literally listed everything, where it is, how you get there. And we created a brochure that we dropped off at every accommodator in town, and it's on our website. Festivals and events, we'll continue on with support of all of those. And I'm looking for ways to help Cactus Jalopies become a little bit more trackable. Looking into some software to see if we can perhaps manage the registration, and trying to get them to move their focus. They've been so focused on bringing as many people to town as they possibly can, which is wonderful. So we've expanded it by one day. Last year, we had an additional day for Cactus Jalopies, and it was highly successful. When I ask for numbers, I get, well, there must have been 10,000 people here, and I can't, I can't write a check on that. So we're hoping that we can get them to engage with us on registration. I can, I can gather a database, and we can start working with what we have. We had 500 cars this year, kind of running out of room. And so we need to look at how we can enhance this and make more money and, and provide maybe a fuller experience. I've been told that the Medieval Fair will not take place in 2019. It's very volunteer-dependent, and there just didn't seem to be the desire to carry on with that. And I understand that Devour will take place in October of 2019, which is nice, because that moves it out of a summer month. And so our culinary market continues to be very important, and we'll continue to do all of the things that we do with that and support all of that. Wedding market, again, we'll continue to support that. We will not be attending trade shows. We've been told very clearly by our stakeholders that, you know, when we go to those wedding shows, the leads that we're able to bring back are not helpful leads. Those are people that decide they would like to have a wedding on July 1st long weekend, and they want it for $15 a plate. So, you know, we need to sort of realign how we promote the wed, this place as a wedding destination and ensure that people are understanding it's a destination wedding venue and that their best times again would be shoulder periods. We're also getting more heavily engaged in meeting conferences and incentive travel. We see this as a great opportunity to expand our shoulder season and perhaps even impact our MRDT. As you may be aware, snowbirds do not impact the MRDT, because anything 27 days or over does not require MRDT to be charged, and there's very few snowbirds that don't hit that mark. So the snowbird traffic, as much as we like it, isn't impacting our bottom line, and we'd like to bring some business in shoulder season that does. We'd also like to be able to give some balance to the type of market mix that the properties are having in the shoulder season. So we're working mostly on incentive travel because of the size, but we've become involved in Business Events Canada, which is as an arm of the Canadian Tourism Commission. And we're also active members in Meetings Incentives Canada, which is another organization that promotes meetings and incentives moving around. Travel trade, I talked about already a little bit. That is the tour market. That doesn't mean busloads of people coming necessarily. They come, FIT is what we call it now, and usually those groups are somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 people, and they're doing a number of different things. And like everything else, tour operators are looking for that thing that's different than anybody else. So we're working very closely with a number of operators that provide a very off-the-beaten-trap kind of an experience. And the good thing about that is, is that these are also not price-sensitive. These are people that are willing to pay for that unique experience, and they're also here. So if we have issues with fires and floods, they're still coming. So that's something that we want to make sure that we explore fully. So I've got a graph here that I just wanted to share with you that shows you just how we're spending our money and on what markets. And it's fairly well-balanced and represents what we think is important to making sure that we have covered all of the bases in terms of opportunities and experiences for visitors to have. And the next page is the budget, and I'm not going to go through it line by line. And I will have a copy of this for each of you through Brianne, so that you can review it, study it, have a look at it. Please, any one of you, call me at any time. I'm happy to further explain some of the expenses and the changes in our expenses. We have experienced a significant drop in projected funding for 2019. It's a number of things that have created that. It's a little bit like the perfect storm. We worked really hard as an organization to come up with palatable ways to deal with that, because in total, it was, it was close to $150,000. So we really had to make some hard decisions and some shifts, and I think what we've come up with is very good and workable. It is a temporary fix, and I sincerely believe that we will recover the drop in MRDT funding that we experienced because of some of our challenges this year. We have come up to a renewal time in many of our agreements, and one of our agreements is changing significantly. Don't quite know what it looks like yet, so I can't count on the dollars that used to come with that agreement. And then, of course, as you're all aware, we will no longer be carrying the economic development contract. We're looking forward to working with the new individual that's hired. I think we have a lot of marketing expertise that I'd like to be able to continue working to promote that is under the messaging of economic development, business development, and growth. And that's a very different message than the one that we're focusing on in our tourism marketing. The next page, Brianne? And so this just shows you what our revenues have looked like since 2017. And... And so, this just shows you what our revenues have looked like since 2017, and you'll see that MRDT in 2018 is not where we'd like it to be. But we are forecasting a little bit more aggressively in 2019, and the reasons that we're doing that is, one, we were successful in getting enough signatures to apply for 3% MRDT. So, I'm just finalizing all of the documents, and I'll have that sent in. I've been fortunate enough to be working on the MRDT project for two years in a row, so I have a lot of really good friends in government right now, and it's in their best interest to hurry this along. The official timeframe is six to nine months for approval, but I feel like we might be able to push that a little bit on, a little bit on the quicker side. And so, that will help us significantly in turning our revenues around. And we also have a few other ideas and plans to increase our revenues. But of course, the economic development contract will go to zero. Festivals and events will go to zero, because we will no longer be producing them. And our retail sales will only have nowhere to go but up. And for those of you that don't know, we're hosting a Chick's &amp; Cheese Christmas shopping party at the end of this month, and I really want the local people to know that this is a source for shopping as well. And we're very careful when we go on our buying trips to make sure that we don't produce, reproduce the things that are already being sold in town. And because I'm such a great shopper, I pretty much know who's selling what. So, there you have our presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kelly, thank you very much. That was very helpful to look at what's happened in 2018. I appreciate that you coming with, with that kind of information. We get bits and pieces of it, but to have it all together is very helpful, and, and well done in your plans for 2019. And I just want to say thank you to Kelly and Joanne for being a big part of TOTA last week. I attended for two days, and as a matter of fact, Glenn, the executive director, announced this morning on his Monday musings that there were 200 people, and I thought that was stretching it a little bit, because I think it was about 170. But thank you very much, and I'll certainly open it up to questions. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Kelly, one of your success indicators is the occupancy rate, and I'm wondering if you could maybe just inform us how you gathered those statistics, what the sources are, and the accuracy of them.
Well, there's something called the STAR report. It's industry-wide, North America-wide. It's something that is agreed upon by the accommodation sector, and they participate willingly, and it's a paid, something they need to pay for. So, when I first arrived, I found that we really didn't have any data that could tell us in hard numbers, how did we do? So, that was one of the first things that I put together. All of the branded hotels take part in the STAR reporting anyway, all of Holiday Inn, Best Western, Coast Hotels, any of the big brands, they do that as a matter of course. And so, what happens is, is the hotel's controller, whomever is recording the monthly information, records that and sends it in. How accurate is it is as, you know, I've been working in the hotel industry really long time. It's kind of like cheating at golf. Like, what's the point? If you're, if you're not gonna be reporting honestly, then the numbers mean nothing. Why would you bother paying for the report? So, I believe that the numbers are pretty accurate. What I do think, though, is that there's a bit of a lack of understanding on what you should report. When a hotel takes rooms out of service, for instance, are those rooms that should be counted in the monthly occupancy report? You know, if they're not being sold on purpose, they're off the books. So, there is a spot on the STAR report to say how many rooms you're reporting on. So, for instance, the Holiday Inn this spring wasn't able to sell all of their rooms. It was approximately 30 rooms that were out of service, and they reported accurately on that, and I checked for that. We're fortunate in a town this size where we kind of all know what everybody's up to. So, I believe the report is accurate. What I get is a little bit different. Each of the hotels will report. There are seven hotels that report, and it costs them approximately $700 a year US. And what they need to do is file their report. Then what happens is, I have also signed up for a STAR report, but I'm comparing my, so we call it a comp set. So, I've decided who our comp set is, which is our competitive markets. And I've looked at other RMI communities that are very resort-focused. I've looked at what's close by, and with the marketing committee's assistance, we've come up with a number of communities. Kelowna is included, simply because we want to have some sort of a measure on that business market, the meeting and incentive market. We have Tofino, because we want to get a sense of just what some of the most successful resort communities are doing. And so, I look at those numbers. We also have Penticton, and that's where I really compare, is what Penticton is doing. And we look at an overall occupancy number and an overall average rate, month by month. And so, the STAR report is kind of that sobering thing that I have to look at every month, because we are, we are behind, but we have an extremely healthy average rate, more so than most of the community. So, it depends on where you're focusing and what, what matters as to how you read that report. But it is the only tool that we have as a destination marketing organization to measure how we're doing as a community.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to give us a very detailed report, and Mrs. Hilsen, did you want us to have a motion to accept the report? No, you don't need to do that.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thank you so much. And welcome to the Assouius Elementary School. We went ahead with delegation number two, because we waited for you for a few minutes. So, you were obviously a little bit behind, and we welcome you now. So, would you like to, are you, Mr. Bayless, coming up to the microphone, or do you have some of the children coming up to explain? Please come up to the microphone, so we can have you, and when you, when you speak, would you please speak into it, because we're on Granicus, which means that your, your parents at home will be able to hear you. Okay, welcome. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor McCordough and town councillors. Congratulations to all either being re-elected or newly elected to this council. We did quite a bit of work in our school around the municipal election, and we understand that it is an honor for you to be chosen to represent the interests of others. My name is Tessa, and with me this morning is Hallie, Harcomall, and Danica. We also feel the honor of having been chosen to represent others. We have been chosen to come to speak to you to represent the other students who have been selected to go to WE Day. And as students selected to go to WE Day, we have been chosen to represent Assouius Elementary School in a very big event.
Good morning. My name is Hallie. We are all proud to stand here as representatives of a group of students at Assouius Elementary, who are very committed to affecting positive changes in both our local and global communities. We are also a part of students who will be attending WE Day in Vancouver on November 22nd. While we know that you would have seen a similar video last year when another group of students asked for your support, we would like to show you this video to remind you what WE Day is all about.
My name is Harcomall. One year ago, some of our classmates came to speak to you about WE Day. They requested that you financially support our efforts to go to WE Day, to lead us into a year of students taking positive initiative in our school, our town, and our world, to make positive changes. Craig Kielberger, who we heard in the video, has said, "WE Day is not a one-day event, it's a year-long commitment to taking positive action." We speak to you today as students ready to make that commitment, as we, as well as on behalf of many others, ready to make the same commitment.
Last year, with the help of your generous support, a group of Assouius Elementary students did go to WE Day. They had an amazing experience and came back inspired. They came back not only inspired to undertake positive projects, but they came back prepared and excited to inspire others, including the four of us. As we speak to you today, we know that we are students that will be going to go to WE Day, and we are prepared to go and come back to inspire others.
After the students came back last year, a number of positive projects were undertaken. Many students contributed to the, towards the school-wide initiative to recycle batteries, as WE Day has partnered with a company that provides essential zinc tablets to children in developing countries for each battery recycled. We were able to collect and recycle close to 1,000 batteries. It feels empowering to know that our efforts saved lives of children that we will never even know.
There are also fundraising and awareness campaigns run by students, groups, and individuals in support of Children's Hospital of Vancouver, the Assouius Food Bank, facilities for our own school, the SPCA, anti-bullying, and the South Okanagan Women's Shelter. It's good to know that through our contributions and actions towards our community, that our efforts do have positive outcomes.
Through these events, the students of Assouius Elementary have come to see a larger worldview and understand that through our actions, we can make a positive change in the world.
It is rewarding to look back and see all our school communities has done, but today we are more excited about looking forward as a group. We are strongly committed to being actively involved in positive actions towards our local, global communities. We have each been inspired not only by the "We to Me" philosophy, but we have been inspired by our older schoolmates who have gone before us. Now that we are some of the older students in our school, we equally take on the responsibility of providing leadership to our younger schoolmates, and teaching them the power they have to affect positive change in their local and global communities.
Even though we have plans, part of the excitement of the year will be discovering new passions that will inspire us and our schoolmates.
We have two requests of town council today. We are respectfully asking for your financial support to assist our families and school with the cost of our WE Day trip for our school group. With the expenses of accommodation, transportation, and food, the WE Day trip is quite costly. The help that you could provide with these expenses would be very helpful and much appreciated.
Also, we are requesting use of the town bus for November 21st and 22nd. Last year, town council was generous enough to grant use of the bus for the WE Day trip. By using the town bus, the WE Day trip organizers were able to avoid booking a big yellow school bus through the school district. Use of the town bus has two primary benefits. First, it greatly reduces the cost for WE Day trip organizers. The big yellow bus has several costs of its own associated with it, so a smaller town bus allows us to avoid these costs.
Also, the smaller bus allows us to significantly reduce the carbon footprint of our trip. The big yellow bus that can carry more than 70 students is very wasteful for a group of 15 students and three chaperones. We feel that as a group who promotes social responsibility, we want to be able to demonstrate social responsibility with our transportation. We would appreciate very much if town council would grant us use of the bus for the two days of the trip. Thank you for your consideration of our request.
Good morning. I'd like to speak from the educator's perspective for a moment, and say that this will be the seventh year of Assouius Elementary sending a group to WE Day. And I think, no, I'm sure, that my colleagues at school would agree with me, that over the course of those years, we've absolutely seen a culture change within the school. I don't want to say that's owing entirely to WE Day, but I know that being a WE school certainly plays a part in that. Examples of how we've seen the school culture change, if we have kids that have an idea of some initiative they want to undertake, whether it's a bake sale to support the SPCA or something on a, on a larger scale. There was a time, not that long ago, seven years ago, when we started this, that students might come to me and say, "Can we do this? Can we ask Mr. McFarlane, who was our principal at the time, can we do this?" Now, we're at a stage where kids will just come and say, "We're doing this." And they've just gained that empowerment, that they just feel like they can do it. If they have an idea, there's no sort of thought in their mind that there's anything standing in their way. We as school staff will still need to help them facilitate those plans, but yeah, now they're coming with ideas of, "Why not? Yeah, we can do that." Even coming here today to speak to council, I remember a time a few years ago, when we first started coming to council, and Mr. Miller and I, a colleague who we organize our WE Day activities with, we'd kind of have to cajole some kids into coming to speak to council, because they'd be a little bit nervous and intimidated. But now, ask these students, "Yeah, sure, good, let's do it." And there's just no hesitation that, that they can do it. So, that empowerment that students are feeling is, I think, a very concrete result of our culture change within the school. As I say, seven years that we've been going to WE Day. So, I was thinking about this. What that means now is that we have these grade-seven students that, well, since grade one, and obviously, most of the students in the school, they've never gone to a school that didn't put a high premium on student empowerment. So, I think that's, we're seeing the benefits of that now. And further, that we see, I know I spoke to council before saying that the statistics come out of WE Day show that students that attend WE Day, they have a higher rate going through their lives of entering university and university completion. Students who go to WE Day have a higher rate of participating in a local government, and, you know, so those first kids that we took seven years ago, they're now into their young adulthood in this community. So, they're starting to take their place, and the lessons they've learned through WE Day are now coming out into the community. And so, these students are a continuation of that legacy. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bayless, and, and the four students. We certainly appreciate you coming and talking to us, and you were all extremely eloquent, and, and obviously, the right people to take on a job like this. So, well done. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Way to go. Mr. Bayless, I have a lot of respect for you letting them take the lead. There's no possibility that anybody in their right mind would say no at this point, and great job. I just wanted to comment on one thing. Yes, the future of Assouius is in your hands. We are so lucky and so fortunate. I hope you have tremendous success in your life, and, and just one other minor thing, your public speaking skills are awesome. You stood up... You stood up there in a clear and concise way, got your point across, so thank you very, very much for doing that.
Thank you.
I have one question. What does W E, We, stand for? Is there, is it just We inclusive of all of us, or is there something more to it?
No, it's not an anagram, it doesn't stand for anything, it's just the idea of Me being self-centered, self-focused, to turn that focus to a We. A We might be a local community, might be, you know, up to the global community.
And I know that you're going to Vancouver, and there would be several other schools in the province going. Is this a national enterprise or worldwide? I'm assuming it's worldwide, am I correct?
It is international. The brothers that we saw in the video that started it, Mark and Craig Kielberger, are Canadian from the Toronto area. So it began in Canada, but it's grown from there. It's grown now into the United States and also into the UK in terms of We Days. But now, of course, the efforts that the We charity undertakes has a very wide international effect in developing countries and many different places around the world.
Good. Well, thank you again very much to all of you, and good luck, I hope you have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Rhodes.
Just a quick question for staff. Would we be doing a motion today, or is this coming back?
Yes, so what I'd like is a resolution from council to send this to the meeting this afternoon for decision because of the short timelines.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And Counselor King is seconding that. All in favor? Thank you very much. Is that the only motion you need, Mrs. Henson?
Thank you.
Thank you, we will deal with it this afternoon at our open meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, and we're sorry to keep you away from school for this long, but anyway, it's kind of interesting to listen to other things that are going on at Town Council, right?
Anyway, this just becomes an extension of school.
Perfect.
This is a learning experience here.
Good. Our next delegation is a presentation by Michael Van Housen, who's the president of MVH Urban Planning and Design, and he's going to talk to us about our Town Center Renewal Project. Welcome, Mr. Van Housen.
Thank you, mayor and council. It's actually incredibly coincidental. I'm in the teaching business. I look forward to accepting these students at Simon Fraser University, or Vancouver Island University, where I both teach. As Counselor Rhodes said, these are your future leaders. But the We resonates with me because I'm going to talk about a project that's wonderfully, hopefully inclusive. Kelly and Joanne and their organization are part of this future, this 20-year plan that I'm going to introduce to you. And first off, it's a 55-page report that has 14 strategies and 10 actions. When I started this, this project, and I now believe that Osceus is the warmest place in Canada. I wasn't going to go swimming yesterday, but it was the most beautiful day. And we live in a magical time and a magical place in terms of this British Columbia, and I'm really proud to be here and also present your opportunities. What I'm going to do, if we could have the first slide, Brianna, thank you, is simply run through, very briefly, a process, because I am a firm believer, the process, especially in this action plan, will lead to a We conclusion. In other words, to make it successful as I go out into the sunset. It's your leaders here, your leadership as a council, and your involvement of the elementary school, Osceus, Destination of Osceus, and all of the businesses to make this successful is very important. So I'm going to go through the process, a bit of background analysis, and we did look at the economics, the footprint of the downtown, the mixture of the businesses, where the businesses come from, and some strategies associated with that. We started with a council workshop and also to credit the task force, they were engaged throughout the process and committed to making it successful. So we started with a workshop to identify, really find out the opportunities. And if we go to the next slide, we'll see, in the workshop in September, which was incredibly successful, due to our, not my diligence, but the local diligence here of getting people out, and I call it the soft personal touch of going to the businesses and personally inviting them. And I think that will be part of the foundation that makes this success. And from, at that workshop, we had two dimensions. I'm always experimenting with formats at work. Number one, actively engaging, everybody was there in terms of them selecting, going through what we called, from the first workshop, we determined 20 top ideas. So their mission at that workshop was to select 10 and then put a roadmap together as to when, who's going to fund it, and how is it going to happen? Anyway, it was like, it was an incredible buzz that evening, and it led to the top 10 priorities. The bottom left is Cal Shrigley, my illustrator, and he was working on ideas as they were being developed. And I think it was a fascinating dynamic where people could go at the end of the workshop to the back of the room, and Cal could explain the ideas, their ideas, not our ideas, their ideas, and how we could develop them together and them to implement them. Next slide. In our analysis, it's interesting, one of the things that, I have a new book about what I refer to is the next great small to midsize downtowns. And one of the first factors is to look at walking distance, the five-minute, or what I call the 400-meter, 1,237-feet distance. And you have a five-minute downtown. Not too many blocks, you walk into, walk into, you drive through, and that's part of the problem with our downtowns. And to, one of the things that Counselor Rhodes pointed out right at the beginning, resonance, and very important to this plan, creating a pedestrian-first downtown. In other words, when you make decisions in the future, think about those people walking, because remember, cars don't buy things, people buy stuff. And then as you'll see, to the mayor's point, early on, we have to have some successes, maybe small successes, but that will lead to big momentum, not necessarily costly, but effective. In other words, big bang for the bucks. So number one, we found out this five-minute downtown, you have a waterfront that is right there. I've looked at other downtowns, they have railroad tracks surrounding the downtowns, they have nothing within a mile. You have this incredible world-class waterfront that you're continuing to work on, right at your doorstep. So those green connections along, linearly along the waterfront and to your communities are really important to create that pedestrian-first downtown. Also, wayfinding, one thing, you've got a series of city parking lots that are free. They just need the proper signage to say, "Parking over here," and a larger, possibly, again, they don't have to be a huge sign, but effective signage saying, "This is where you park when you turn right." There's a few effective wayfinding elements that we can improve. The other thing, you need focus in a meeting place, and I have a, we have a suggestion here that came from the community of creating an 85th Street Plaza, but not undermining very important, the importance of the waterfront, just creating a meeting place in your downtown. A facelift program, we see that in media, is it a major facelift or whatever, individual through a little incentive program. It's somewhat of a joint venture, cost sharing. I think you can improve and improve certain facades to really give it that freshness. Could be simply paint. More residential, the idea of, one of the key strategies is creating a greater downtown. In other words, it's more than Main Street. It's 74th and 78th where those transitional businesses are. But very important, the muscle behind the downtown should be an increase in residential units. Bringing those go-go seniors who want to walk, I watched them yesterday on Main Street, do the circuits of Main Street with, and they are the buyers. They're walking, they can also buy. And then more incentives, I pointed out, facelift program, possibly a signage improvement program, these are small things that can show leadership from your side to have people saying, "The town is leading, I'm in." Next slide. So we did an economic analysis, and interesting enough, even, I run into this in research all the time, where, oh, we couldn't find the facts. In your community, through a number of data sources and my economists, and then coming to the downtown and actually walking around and literally doing what we call a windshield survey of how big, where it is, and so forth, you see in the top right, the diversity of businesses, and, very important, a conclusion in where the money is coming from, it's coming primarily local. So you focus your initiatives local and within a 30-minute driving distance. You can read through the report and our summary of that, but the local priority first, need more active Main Street street uses. I know this is sensitive, but this aspect of bringing retail, activating Main Street, and then certain businesses that are service-oriented may be moved to 74th and 78th, still proximity, still convenient, but making Main Street a little bit more active. Your business mix, and as you'll see in the report, we went through every business and saw local or from outside, it's fairly healthy, 63, 37. It would be nice, ideally up to 75, 25, local. So as we discussed in our workshops, this aspect of having sort of that local gritty, funky character where people say, "Wow." Just like JoJo's yesterday, I took photographs of even, even the disparate pieces of furniture are all parts of being able to move around, move your chair, and sit in your town, not Nowheresville, North America. Very important. So local first, next slide. So from these, you can't see this clearly, it's in the report, there was a number of opportunities that emerged, so we drew an aerial perspective to again bring character. Here's a number of opportunities. There's a number of vacant, vacant or underutilized parcels, and to your credit, you already can allow, as you see in number three, possibility of a four-story mixed-use building, being residential right to Main Street. In behind, there's also some parcels that could be redeveloped up to three to four stories. You see in the bottom left-hand corner, again, and to your credit, focus your civic uses on Main Street, which you're doing, the new museum. In behind, you can provide additional parking and also infill townhouses. The other aspect of starting to activate the lanes, bringing them alive, the aspect of creating a street tree program. Again, in the summer, it's pretty intense. So between shade shelters and a signature of planting trees, it's a cheap initiative that makes a big bang for the dollar. Again, I mentioned earlier the aspect of just improving your parking signage, so especially during peak seasons, people quickly, from a safety and orientation standpoint, they park once and walk the rest of the day. So to, to the schoolchildren's point, reducing that carbon footprint and actually creating a healthier community. Next slide. So what I want to do is visualize, these are always really important slides, because they visualize improvement. And this is the before shot at 85th Street, north side. Next slide. This is what could be. Again, closure of not the entire block, but half the block to start. Possibly, again, this is where the Rotary comes in, various volunteer, various community-oriented organizations, they can be, they can provide the building blocks of funding for this, whether it be the town clock, public art, something unique to the town, shade structures and tree planting, maybe a water feature, which would cool those hot summer days and translate into simply a piece of public art in the winter. It has to go four seasons. Next slide. This is your center of town right now. So when I work with my designers, we say, "What can be?" Next slide. A landmark. Again, this is an idea. Again, from a visibility standpoint, you have to work with MOTI, I understand the sensitivity, that's maybe 10% of my career, working with MOTI on Main Streets. And this would be, again, showing where people arrive at your center of town. It could be vertical elements echo, again, the historic, the colors, the materials, and so forth, that can be lit from below, but it's a landmark feature that says, "We are here and you have arrived." Next slide. Ah, a wonderful, familiar place. Joanne knows this every day. What we thought, and this is something I, over the last 10 years, I've worked on a lot of different downtowns, and you've got a relative, I measured it yesterday, and point out those, that wonderful quirky, I sat in most seats yesterday, but it's quirky furniture, but it says, "This is your town." This is, this is a self-expression that, and the good news is, your sidewalks are fairly wide, but if we were to transform this into outdoor patios, this is what it could look like. Again, to, this is what I call a good neighbor program. JoJo would consult with, you know, adjoining uses and so forth, and saying, "We'll sacrifice one or two, in this particular case, most likely two parking spaces." Those would convert to bike parking and motorcycle parking. So again, you'd still have motorcycle parking, you'd bring a sidewalk that could be seasonal, it could be in wood, it could be prefab, something that the town could store if there's a number of owners who want to do this. And then inboard, because of our serving laws, is this wonderful extended patio, could be still an expression with flowers and so forth. So it's quite soft, easy to do, and then in winter, if you want to, dismantle it and set it up in the spring. But what I found yesterday, even in November, I was sitting outside, and all you do is, could bring some heaters, and in Copenhagen, they provide blankets because it's wonderfully sunny here. So it could extend this, just summer, to these wonderful shoulder seasons. Next slide. And then finally, what we call conversation corners. You've created this, this wonderful initiative called the bulges, or they call bumpouts, they have a bunch of names for that, but these are opportunities, as you see a sketch at the bottom here, to really animate the corners, because that's where you meet your neighbors. So again, with safety in mind, low-profile plantings, bike parking, outdoor seating that could double as public art, you could see how these can, and with maybe even sacrificing one, one parking space, you could create a little parklet that, again, with business support and business involvement, you can animate each corner to make it a signature within the downtown, not, again, I'm not into generic landscaping, you want to bring the town forward. Next slide. So, final slide, final of three slots. From our discussions, we developed 10 top action plan items. They aren't necessarily in priority order, but we actually, from our 60 people, we went through data, cross-tabbing, et cetera, and defined the top 10, and they came out fairly clearly. Number one, business retention and recruitment. Most importantly, and the first thing that we discussed as part of this project with Ms. McKay, was this aspect of action and focusing on improvement of business. But then I go back to one of the first things, remember, cars don't buy stuff, people buy stuff. So pedestrian orientation is very important. So out of these top 10, if you analyze them, the first one, business retention improvement, some recommendations there, some recommendations on organization, a BIA could be one option, but what I recommend, and I've, I was actually talking to some of my friends who had done a Western Canada analysis of BIAs, and... a Western Canada analysis of BIAs, and their formations and so forth, for the most part, work because they bring people together, but some municipalities, it's seen from businesses as sometimes seen as a tax grab. But again, it creates funding to, again, coordinate marketing, to bring a coordinated effort. I simply say, when somebody pays a dollar, they will go through a snowstorm to go to your party. If they don't pay anything, if they're not in. And so I recommend an organization that you can customize for your downtown that, that relates to those organizational needs. And we have some leaders here today that could help with that. Outdoor patios, accessibility came, came up. As we get older, we know that percentage, and it's anywhere from 20 to 35%, even if you're not that old, you might have some disabilities or some challenges. And so that is critical. So a small extended program, the 85th Street Plaza, I talked about, again, a key meeting place of celebration in the downtown, where people know where to go if there's an activity because that's ground zero. The facade facelift program in terms of, again, paint, it could be a coordinated effort with a local college, you come down and, and have a design weekend, and Color in the World comes in as the paint sponsor, and maybe there's other contributors that sit down and help the businesses, help improve their facade. For instance, I'm not the color person in my household. So they need help and coaching, we could help them with that. The green streets, planting, flower boxes. The Communities in Bloom program is embraced by many small communities, but create a competition for the best display. And all of a sudden, you'll have people out there just, wow, with the tulips and, and various things, and all of a sudden, those places will come alive. Infill residential, those anywhere from four-story, again, I'm a real advocate of three to four-story because it keeps the people attached to their street. Above that, you tend to become removed, and you can get amazing density within a very small footprint. Number eight, wayfinding signage, again, we could have, I really like funky signage. But funky signage doesn't mean, you know, floor to ceiling, 12, landmark signage that's 12-foot. These are signature designs that I'm sure you have wonderful designers in your community that can add character in wood and wonderful colors. The streets are live program, really important, that programming element, four seasons that people have, another community, they actually wrapped a utility box with their schedule, you know, what is happening in your downtown on a weekly evening basis. And then finally, conversation corners. Again, you've done a wonderful initiative, spruce it up, improve it, work with the business owners, and voila. I think that will be part of your momentum. This is, again, a fruit bowl of choices for you to make, make decisions on resources, incentives, and so forth, the opportunity is there. Last two slides. Again, I mentioned key success factors, again, a few years ago, I had done a number of downtown plans, and I said, what have I learned from them? And I said, not very much, and that's, that's dangerous because you have to learn from the experience. But one thing over the last two years in writing this book, and with going back to the communities I've worked with, leadership and partnerships are critical. Engaging the elementary school, working with partners like O'Sue's, Destination O'Sue's, and other local partners to really bring this downtown alive through ownership. Ownership meaning, this is our downtown, we're going to improve it. The idea of a greater town center. In other words, that has two sides to it. One, improve it, but to bring good bones, add muscle to it, we need residential units. And I think some of that is on its way. The idea of workplace shop and learn town center. What is your learning component? In many smaller downtowns, even, while I'm thinking of Lethbridge, Squamish, and so forth, they're bringing university or college units, small little offices, that's where they start, they blossom, into initiatives. So that whole thing of expanding from an eight-hour downtown to a 12-hour downtown, and then changing your policies and creating incentives. Final slide. So next steps. Number one, commit to the plan. This is your plan, this is our plan. And to, again, promote it, make some decision on, how do we organize and come together? Again, there's a number of options there. Select a few small projects that create a big bang. Provide some incentives that actually incentivize your businesses saying, you know, there's a town commitment here. It could be small, but it makes a big difference, it shows leadership. Further work out your budget, and which ones will create that momentum, light the fire. To the mayor's point at the beginning, we need early successes to create momentum. Integrate these components into your capital plan. So on a yearly basis, this being a 20-year plan, you can expect a line item called the downtown, or, excuse me, the town center and the greater town center, and there could be a number of initiatives that you choose that are, again, cost-effective, and monitor them year to year to see what is successful, what isn't. Implement, build success. Partner with businesses in the residents. Celebrate small successes. That's so important. Look at these future leaders, look at the future elementary school children. I mean, it just warmed my heart to see their commitment to their community. And so it's a little, those little things, ribbon cutting, having celebrations out there with naturally non-alcoholic beverages and good local food, like, you know, what you do best. So, so celebrate small successes to make a big difference over time. And this plan is your opportunity to select, through your wonderfully talented staff and yourself, the task force, to select some initiatives that will, that will light this town up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Your energy has really inspired us, and, and thank you to Gina for finding you and bringing you on board because Gina's just as energetic as you are. And, and I think it's a great plan, and I certainly look forward to having some of these things, let's go.
And always, always remember, I love coming to your town, and I'm only three and a half hours away, or an email away. So I like, for me, for me now in my career and my teaching, I'm an urban design missionary. So that means if council, or if you have a question, and you say, Michael, this isn't working, how can we tweak it? What about that organization? Please give me a call. It's a pleasure for me to continue to support the project and continue to visit and see how the lights are being turned on in your wonderful town.
Well, thank you. We certainly appreciate it, and we welcome Don here today, too, who's our new planner, and he's getting this thrown at him right away, right, Don?
Good.
So council, would anyone like to? Counselor Bennett.
Just, just one question. When you talked about...
Turn your microphone on. Nope.
Rookie. Mike, just a question, when you were talking with people about the BIA, and the BIA, my understanding would be the building owners. So you've got the building owners, and you have the merchants, so a lot of the people that are renting basically don't have control of the buildings. So if you went in and you said, okay, we want to do downtown plan, we want to do all the stuff to the buildings, the taxes are going to go to the building owner, and it's the merchants that are going to want to make the changes. How, how do you work the, the BIA in with merchants?
Well, that's exactly one of the problems in many of the smaller downtowns where speculation now is rampant, where, where you have absentee landlords. I'm not sure what, what the cross-section is. My sense is it's local ownership, that there's, there's a better connection. But very important, everybody wants to be successful, and that success sometimes, I think the magic is to sit down and discuss it with them and figure out what organization fits here because there could be a transitional, maybe it's called the town center partnership. And you sit down and simply discuss, we have a plan, there's a number of options, how do we move towards an organization that provides leadership and, and informs council as to what to do? So to crawl before you walk, before you run. I don't have the solution, but I know through Ms. McKay and the new planner, they have good communication skills. And the aspect of sitting down and figuring out, and then making some phone calls and working with the leaders we have here, get, you know, the other thing is, what happens is, nothing happens, there's no organization, and there's no leadership. So I think you need an organization to inspire the jumpstart and then start success. And then all of a sudden, with increased sales, it then drives values, that there's an interest of saying, this is working, and we're actually, how could I say it, steering the ship together. And, and so I don't have this, because there's many different forms of that BIA organization across North America. There's some very successful, but I know in small communities, I've, I've heard there's sometimes a pushback because, especially at the beginning, when the, the sales are stressed or people are just surviving, they don't have that little something to, to give to the BIA. It, it tips the business. Thank you.
Ms. McKay, you need to turn on your microphone, please.
Okay. Am I on? I'm on, I'm up. Just briefly, I think that's a really important point, that we'll be looking for sort of a maiden O'Sue's kind of, kind of organization, and we'll be speaking with the business community about what works for them in our community, because what works in other communities isn't necessarily what will be successful here. So we'll start with that conversation, and we'll just see where it goes. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to? Well, thank you very much, Michael. We look forward to seeing you here again when we do projects. We would love to have you come back and, and take part, and we don't just drink coffee here, we drink a little wine as well, so you could be invited back for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Menko.
So just as a matter of process, Michael has made a presentation here today. This will be coming back to council, the entire plan will be coming back to council for support, a resolution of support, so it can be used in our planning processes.
So do you need a resolution right now?
No, no, it'll come back to the regular council meeting at some point in time.
It's on the agenda this afternoon.
Already? Oh, okay.
Keep it going.
Well, that's a good idea. Okay, thank you. I don't believe there's anything else. I was just going to ask Mr. Maguire, are you planning to come back to the meeting this afternoon?
I'm going to try.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged Mr. Maguire because this is his last kick at the cap, really, for the O'Sue's time. So if you're coming back this afternoon, we'll wait till then. Okay, could we please have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Counselor King, Counselor Harvey, all in favor. Thank you very much, everyone.